That might be a little confusing.
I don't know what else we're gonna do.
You could potentially take up the E-Bots item.
E-Bots?
Oh, E-Bots, yeah. We could do E-Bots.
I don't think that will take too long. Shall we do that? Is that all right with the commission?
Okay, so we will table this for now and we will move on to the Emeryville-Berkley-Oakland Transit Study.
All right. Brooklyn. Brooklyn is the new Brooklyn.
It is Brooklyn.
Yeah. I keep hearing.
Now, we're talking about the draft report. So, as you recall, we had some meetings where we talked about what trips people take and what problems and ideas they had. And then we had, we brought out some options for review and they involved some C-shaped routes that went over to BART. And then now, we have, we have taken the preliminary draft recommendations that are in this report to some groups and they helped shape it. And now, you are the first group to look at the draft report. And we'll go to a bunch of other groups, the city councils, transit boards, and then we'll see how much it changes before the final. Oops, wrong way. So, this report talks about transit context, proposed improvements, short-term, and a trunk line connector enhanced bus and streetcars in the long term. It evaluates the improvements and looks at funding and implementation. So, the context is that the shuttles, including the Emery Go-Around, would continue as planned. The Emery Go-Around does have some changes they plan to make to handle increased ridership, but there wouldn't be any changes coming out of this report. The other context is this month, AC Transit is holding hearings on their recommendations that came out of their comprehensive operations analysis. One of those is to reroute the 26 to go from Public Market on Mandela to West Oakland BART. So, that's an important context to be aware of. Other thing they're thinking about doing is splitting the 49 in Berkeley so that one is a 48 from Emeryville to Ashby BART and one is a 49 from Emeryville up Dwight to Shattuck. And we have talked with a couple of AC Transit staffers and they might, we have some other ideas that you'll see in a minute about that. And then, the other context item is that Berkeley, Oakland is doing their Broadway Transit Study. That could lead to extending and upgrading the freebee either to an enhanced bus or a shuttle, I mean, or a streetcar. And we'll show where that would be. So, the report recommends several short-term improvements. Improving the Emeryville bus stops, you've probably heard about both of these already. We are in line for, if Measure BB passes, widening the I-80 ramps for an F-Bus stop. And we also have been thinking it would be good to make it a better bus hub at the San Pablo Fortieth. Our changes to AC Transit's changes are, we are recommending that we route the new 48 from Ashby BART north on Sixth to Gilman and extend the realigned 49 that they want to take from Public Market up to Shattuck and Bancroft, which gets it to the University in three blocks from downtown Berkeley BART. And then, we're also, someone in Berkeley came up with this idea, extending the F-line north a block just so that it will hit the bus hub at the Public Market. We've looked at the map and you don't have to go far to do that. And that way, everybody gets a connection to trans-based service there. Connecting to Berkeley Amtrak, we're recommending that the West Berkeley Shuttle keep adding more members, as it does sometimes, and so we can add Amtrak service. And if this 48 goes up there to jog it over to the Amtrak station. And then, in West Oakland, there are two major developers that have mentioned the idea of, would it be nice to have a shuttle? So, someone could get together with them and maybe form shuttles that would go maybe to, from West Oakland BART up to West Grand to connect with the logistics center that's going to be on the Army Base and Gateway Park, that's going to be at the base of the bridge. Another recommendation is to encourage the use of AC Transit EZ-Passes. I think we're already requiring them in some developments that are near that bus hub. And there's some people that would like to look at demand-response transit and our consultant thought, well, maybe that could work for late-night coverage when there's not much else. So, here's our recommendation. The E-Bots trunk line corridor is an enhanced bus and it would run from Gilman-San Pablo through Berkeley on Hollis Street through Emeryville and then on Mandela to the West Oakland BART Station and over to Jack London Square. And some people had the idea of it going from the Berkeley Amtrak over to downtown Berkeley on University. So, we left it in as a mention, but most people didn't want to do that because there exists frequent service there already. So, what this thing would be, would be a hybrid, or I put in battery bus because I've been talking with the consultant on the phone since the draft came out. And he said, oh, yeah, we could put that in there. So, it's not in the draft, actually. A 10-minute frequency, 15 minutes in early and late hours, 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM on weekdays, 7:00 AM to 11:00 PM on weekends, faster travel, signal priority, five stops per mile, that's like 1,000 feet apart. Level boarding, that means curb extensions and buses that have a low floor and wide aisles. The shelters with lighting and cameras and trash bins and bike racks, real-time arrival info and marketing, so people know it's there. That makes a big difference. And the other proposal for the long term, this is for like 10 to 20 years from now, is two streetcars connecting Emeryville and West Oakland to MacArthur BART. Now, what this would do would be take the part of the Emery Go-Around route that has the most ridership and where they're always getting crowded and trying to figure out how to accommodate all their ridership and add something to that by having a streetcar that goes from West Oakland BART. And this route would go in both directions, but I'll describe it going this way, up Shell Mound, across on 64th, down on Christie, over on Powell, down on Hollis and back. And then, the other one in West Oakland would go from the West Oakland, from the MacArthur BART Station on Fortieth down Mandela to the BART Station over to Jack London Square. So, the West Oakland specific plan includes an O, and this would complete the O along with Broadway. The Broadway study is looking at extending it north, maybe to 27th Pill Hill, maybe to Fortieth, maybe beyond, maybe over to BART, maybe not. If it didn't, then this thing would have to go over to Broadway to complete the O. And it would have the same characteristics as the bus, except it would have tracks. So, one thing people were really concerned about last time around was the cost. And we finally did figure out the annualized capital cost and add it to the operating and maintenance costs to get annual costs so we can compare. So, the trunk line connector enhanced bus, it's eight miles long, the buses last 12 years, that gives us about $20 million a year combined cost. The Emeryville streetcar is five miles, the cars and tracks last 30 years, so you have long, even though it costs more, you have more time to pay for them. So, that's about $21 million a year. The West Oakland streetcar is about four miles, it's about $14 million a year. The two streetcars together are about 35. So, that starts to look not as much more than the bus as it did before. And then, the report evaluates the improvements in several ways. It looks at ridership, they have improved their methods of calculating the ridership so it's not quite so conservative, and considers all the different inputs, the development, the response to amenities, and better looking at what the ridership rate is now. So, we, the ridership looks pretty reasonable now. Reduction in vehicle miles traveled as people switch to the buses are based exactly on the ridership. Effects on environmental justice communities, a quarter-mile buffer around the route is, gives you almost the same percent minority and low-income people as is in the whole study area. The reason it doesn't quite is because the study area is wider at the south end and you can't get everybody within a quarter mile of the route. But it would have a lot of good effects on West Oakland, uh, West, yeah, reducing sales leakage and connecting people to jobs and all that. Safety and security, they have ideas about how, once we get into design, to design the stops for visibility and to keep the bike lanes continuous, minimize risk from the tracks and, of course, the stops will have light, the stations, the stops, the shelters will have lights and cameras. These proposed routes would overlap a bunch of other routes, but there wouldn't be anything else that would do the whole route. There would be economic development potential from all three of these services. And the really, West Oakland is more in a position to benefit from this because they have a lot of potential, whereas Emeryville already has done some development. And Berkeley doesn't really have as much upzoning as West Oakland does right now. But it would, oh, in Kansas City, there is a, they call it a bus rapid transit, but it does not have a dedicated lane. And that bus, along with a lot of government incentives, has helped to spur a lot of economic development. So, there's one example of that. And we've been looking at who could run this thing and what funding sources there could be. There could be a tri-city joint powers authority, it could use a federal grant along with a bunch of different funding sources that are local to match that, developer fees, parking tax, parcel tax, local gas tax. And, or, there could be a transportation association, a new one or expanded one with an assessment district that all the different people pay into. Or, AC Transit could run it, or BART could run it. These agencies are eligible for federal formula funding. And AC Transit can operate with EZ-Passes and they are already set up to charge fares. So, we got, John Sherman made some comments on this and I want to address both of them. One comment is he would like to reroute the F-Bus so that the people in central Emeryville have a direct shot to downtown Berkeley. And we thought about this when we did the transportation, not alternative, but sustainable transportation plan, and I made this slide then. Now, I've added the two potential new AC Transit routes, so both of these parts of the route would have a route up toward Berkeley if AC Transit does that. And what this map showed was that if this change happened, the people in central Emeryville would go from having a circuitous access to downtown Berkeley to having none and to having better, direct. And the people on Fortieth Street would go from having circuitous access to having none. So, that's something to consider when you decide whether to recommend that or not. And then, Mr. Sherman also proposed that we run our streetcar on the pathway through Sherwin-Williams. And we'd just like to point out that although the streetcar looks pretty in the lawn, you might not want your children to play right where the streetcar is going to run, so that could reduce Sherwin-Williams' ability to meet their open space requirements through the green in the middle of that path. So, we would like to hear from you. Do the short-term improvements make sense? The shuttle in West Berkeley and West Oakland, changes to AC Transit's potential changes, demand-response transit for late night? Would the trunk line connector enhanced bus be useful? And what do you think of the streetcars in Emeryville and West Oakland? And what local funding sources and operator types make sense in the long and short term? So, might take a little longer than you thought to think about all of that. I could answer any questions.
I've got a couple of questions. There was some discussion of whether or not the 48 should run to the public market or continue up to Gilman. I guess I was wondering, why does it have to be an either-or? What was the thinking there?
I don't think, I don't have a good map of that. AC Transit has, is, was originally thinking about having four, two different lines going from, splitting the 48 into two different lines, both of which would go from the public market to, one to Ashby, one to downtown Berkeley. And I guess that mostly the technical advisory committee thought that was kind of redundant. And people were wanting service to North Berkeley, so they said, well, let's take this one line from Ashby up to North Berkeley and have the other one go from the public market up to downtown Berkeley. Does that answer your question?
Well, the way it was worded made it seem as if the options were either to go to Gilman or to go to the public market. Is that, am I misunderstanding?
Right, right. But the reason the TAC wanted to go to Gilman with that bus is because they have the other bus going from the public market, that's, that would be the 49.
Okay. And I guess, I mean, well, one other question I had was, was Berkeley not interested in streetcars or what was the reason that the streetcars were limited to the Oakland, Emeryville?
When I went to the Berkeley Transportation Commission, they said, we would like to see streetcars where there's density and our density is downtown. They don't really have a dream of making Northwest Berkeley really dense. There is some growth happening there, University Village is there, and so there is an argument for our enhanced bus going up there. But when it comes to the streetcar, I don't think they really are zoned for enough, as much density as Emeryville and West Oakland, in that part of Berkeley.
And I think if I could add to that, it's, the thing is, it doesn't preclude that from happening because personally, I believe that once we get these, everyone's going to want them. And I believe the routes that we're looking at can definitely be extended into West Berkeley when the community of West Berkeley decides that maybe West Berkeley needs to densify or develop a little more than what they're limiting it for now. So, I don't think that this is going to say, you know, we're not going to ever put them there. It definitely is going to allow us to expand into that area when, when and if Berkeley decides that they want to develop that area.
We didn't want to make land use recommendations. We wanted to respect everybody's existing land use plans, but thinking in the future, yeah.
When Mandela Parkway was put in and the demolished freeway taken out, I understood it was Oakland's plan to greatly increase the housing density in that area, but the locals didn't want it. They were afraid of gentrification. So, has the city changed its mind now?
Oh, the West Oakland specific plan is worth perusing. It's very interesting. They want to change most of their industrial areas to be more intensely industrial, more modern kinds of industry, and more employing the people that live there. And they want to convert some areas that are, there are some places where there's kind of a mix of uses and there shouldn't be, and they want to kind of extend the neighborhoods a little bit and make a line between the residential and the industrial more clear. And they want to have extensive residential and employment development near the West Oakland BART Station. But they have not proposed a lot of residential along Mandela, mostly. There are some nodes.
Our line was to go, wasn't it?
Well, I think the streetcar, the increased density of West Oakland that the streetcar would serve would mostly be non-residential. It would mostly be jobs in the area.
And existing residential.
On the trunk line connector, you mentioned that the stops would be proposed like five per mile. Do you, no, do you have statistics on like how long the estimated trip would be, the length of that from, from Gilman to Jack London Square?
The whole line is eight miles.
I mean, time-wise, how, the duration of the trip?
Yes, they did say that. See if I can find it real quick, because I don't remember. Page 18. Say. Maybe it didn't say. Oh, here we go. Forty minutes. They're estimating about 12 miles an hour, which is actually what buses mostly do because with all the stops and everything.
And what about the, the streetcar loop? Do we know how long that would take or half of it would take? I guess you're really going to ride all the way around.
We're guessing about the same as the bus. We're trying to get a bus defined that is as much like a streetcar as possible with the level boarding. And if it's a electric bus, it would also have more smooth, quiet riders, a ride, a smoother ride. Streetcars, generally, streetcars might go a little slower than bus buses because they have a smoother start and stop. But if this bus already has that, they might be about the same.
I just have one thing I wanted to mention as a correction in the, this is the draft report on page seven. There's the mention in the top first item of bullet points, the Fourth Street in Berkeley is mentioned twice.
Okay.
It's the fourth bullet point down in the first column and the third bullet point down in the second column.
Yes.
So, we want to take one of those out so we don't look, we're trying to pad our...
I like that idea.
Chair Moss? Just as a point of information for the commission, the draft report talks about the proposed AC Transit route changes. That's kind of given as background information and to inform the recommendations of the study. It's, they are not recommendations of the study itself, they're just basically background information. But I'm not sure if Diana really emphasized this, those AC Transit proposed route changes have not been finalized yet. They're a work in progress, they're still being studied. And just, I think this past week, AC Transit announced a series of community workshops on their proposed route changes, which you might be interested to know about. There's a number of them, one of which is happening as we speak.
Let's go.
West Oakland, at the Defremory Center, which is where we had our E-Bots workshops for West Oakland. But they're all over the AC Transit service area, but there is another one coming up relatively close to us, and that would be on Saturday, October 18th, from 10:30 to 12:30 at the South Branch Berkeley Library, which is on Russell Street. So, if you're interested, you can also, of course, go to their website and submit any comments you might have there. But if you're interested in the AC Transit route changes, there are workshops going on right now.
And Charlie, was there also an invitation to take a survey on that email?
AC Transit?
Yeah.
There might have been, might have been.
So, I just wanted to mention that for information.
Any other questions?
Any other questions of the staff? All right, then with that, we will go ahead and open the public comment. If anyone would like to speak on this item, please come forward.
Hi, my name is John Sherman and I've been working on the streetcar project since 2006. I think we gave our first presentation to the planning commission in 2006. It started on a Thursday night and ended on a Friday morning. It was probably pretty painful for the planning commissioners, but I wanted to say thanks, thanks to everybody from the planning commissioners that listened to a very, very nervous, pretty dreadful PowerPoint presentation, that first presentation, to the people throughout the general plan update process that listened. And, but throughout the process, people were really cautious. They're like, John, this is really ambitious, I don't know about this. It's like, this is costing a lot of money. But there were very, very few people that said, don't do it. There were a lot of people that said, we're Emeryville, we do ambitious things, we're going to proceed really cautiously with this, but let's look forward at this. And one of the things that that gets us, I think, is having that kind of vision. Even though the streetcar may be 10 to 20 years down the road, what it gets us is this study that has us all communities working together to work for better transit. So, I encourage you, even though you may think this is like overly ambitious, to keep in mind that this is moving transit forward, and that's a very important thing. One of the things that I think got lost in the study and the emphasis on going to West Oakland BART, the reason people want to go to West Oakland BART, what I hear often, is because they want to get to the BART Station so they can get to San Francisco. I think there's a better way to do that, and that's what the rerouting of the F-Bus is all about. I think we really have to have a very efficient way of getting from downtown Berkeley to Emeryville to San Francisco, make that a semi-express bus, and then provide good access to that, whether that be bike share or pedestrian paths or just different ways to access that. But we need to really shorten that, that transit time on that in my three short minutes here. The other thing, the Sherwin-Williams, don't be afraid of streetcars. If you'd like more information on streetcars, go to our website, www.ebot, emeryvolberkeleyoaklandtram.info. And it gives you illustrations or videos of watching a streetcar. They are not BART trains. And they often are put next to pedestrian corridors, working one with the other. You'll have a bike path, a pedestrian path, and a streetcar path. It's very common in Europe, we just experienced a lot of that. And also, what I showed was a very simplistic diagram of routing it right through the middle. Things could be planned around that, so I don't think we have to worry about kids getting run over by the streetcar. Another thing that the plan mentions that I think is really an opinion is that the streetcar won't, I'll end it there, won't cause economic development. I think that's an error. I think the, the fact that we have a Wareham Building that's sitting empty right now, we don't have Site B developed, we don't have a lot of things developed, is a testament that we still need to invite economic development here. Streetcars are a way to do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak on this item? All right, seeing none, we will bring it back for discussion then. Would you want to start at this end?
Yeah, I guess I just have two primary comments. One is, just to, to sort of repeat what John said regarding the, the F-line, I think we, or I definitely would like to see a direct route into downtown Berkeley that's consistent, reliable. And I was actually surprised to open this up and see still, you know, two bus routes, having to take two buses that do a circuitous route and go down MLK and don't continue down Shattuck where, you know, I guess to me, these, these solutions that we're looking for should mimic what people are already doing when they're driving. And so, so that one surprised me and I think it's, it's key to have, you know, whether it's the F, and I think the F makes sense, but some way to get from downtown Berkeley straight into Emeryville and ideally, straight into San Francisco. Where I disagree a little bit is, I love the streetcar idea and I think we need it, but the route that makes the most sense to me, and I think the route that most people take if they're traveling from West Berkeley to West, to Emeryville to Oakland is on San Pablo, if it's not the freeway. And San Pablo is a, it had at one time been a thriving commercial corridor, parts of it are starting to kind of get revived, but it's a slow process, so much of it needs that energy, that spark. And to me, that is the corridor that needs a streetcar more than anything. It's the route that, I mean, literally all the way up through into Richmond, it's the route that, that needs revitalization more than anything. It's the route that people are taking, it's always packed with cars. There's, it's just lined with commercial or empty commercial spaces. And to me, if, you know, if we're going to do a streetcar, what the first, you know, the first route I'd like to see is one that starts at Jack London Square, goes down Broadway, hits San Pablo, goes on San Pablo as far as it can go. Those are my comments.
Yeah, I'm definitely in agreement with Commissioner Gunkel. And I don't think that streetcars are an outrageous idea, I think that they are the idea that we need. So, I mean, I would like to see that pursued a lot more readily than just the bus improvements. I think we need to really push aggressively to have streetcars and not keep pushing it out to the 20, 30-year, 30-year milestone because we'll never get it. As far as the route, in my mind, San Pablo is the, the most natural route to have the streetcars. That's, that's the connection that most people take, as Commissioner Gunkel was mentioning, from, between Oakland and in Emeryville and up to Berkeley and beyond. So, it seems to make sense to me that that's the route you would choose. So, those are my comments.
Yeah, I think that if a streetcar were to go in, that it could be a loop that went around San Pablo in both directions and, and did serve more the westerly part of the community as well, so that, that would work. I'd like to know a little bit more about how the demand-response transit works for late night because that's the time when people are most reluctant to be taking transit. It's the time where you feel the least safe standing in a bus stop or a transit stop like that. So, I'd like to get more information on how accessible that is, how quickly, how quickly the response is for that. I think that having a more frequent, direct contact from, to San Francisco without having to transfer through West Oakland or MacArthur would be good for Emeryville, and I would support that. Those are my major comments.
Well, I agree with Commissioner Gunkel and Commissioner Tan that San Pablo is the boulevard that we should encourage to grow. It's also wide enough that it could accommodate streetcar tracks without any difficulty. And it's more the center of things.
Yeah, I always thought it was kind of the elephant in the room. There's this big middle part of San Pablo that's lovely landscaping, but it was, since I've, the many years I've lived here, I've always thought, that really ought to be, it really ought to be a, a rail line. And I also agree that I think the West Oakland area needs to be further developed in terms of direct routes and more of a circular loop in that area. of direct routes and more of a circular loop in that area, and straight to Berkeley as well, in terms of, I'm not sure if it would be bus or, and/or, but those are, yeah. All in all, though, really happy to see the, moving forward with the streetcars.
Encouraging to hear. We'll get onto that a little bit more, but I want to, I'm glad Commissioner Gunkel brought up the F line. If anyone ever takes that, it is such a fast way to San Francisco, it beats BART hands down. You get on right under the Paul Street Bridge, you get on the freeway, or the bridge, and the next stop is the San Francisco Transit Center. It is there, it is fast. And if we could connect that to downtown Berkeley and San Francisco, we'd have a winner. It's just, when I had my broken collarbone, I took that home once, and it is such a particular path, and you just, you spend 45 minutes just to get to, you know, four miles into Emeryville on the, on the F bus now. So I think we're, we're missing an opportunity by not asking AC Transit to take that route seriously. It is our only transbay bus from Emeryville to San Francisco during the weekend. You know, that you can use it, it's every half hour. And if we sped that up to every 20 minutes, and it was more direct to downtown Berkeley and San Francisco, you'd have a winning route there. So I really think that, even though this study hasn't really paid that much attention to it, we need to apply the pressure to AC Transit to look at that more seriously. Going on to the, the streetcar on San Pablo, once again, that's more of a Berkeley route, which really isn't interested in the streetcar, it seems like, and it's certainly something we can add. What we have to keep in mind is now, San Pablo is now part of the I-80 corridor. When I-80 is having its problems, their electronic boards are going to direct all that traffic to San Pablo Avenue. So San Pablo Avenue, as soon as that system, I can't remember what that system is called. Does anyone know what Caltrans is doing with I-80 upgrades the?
Integrated Corridor Mobility Project?
Exactly, thank you very much. So San Pablo is the alternate to I-80 when that project starts. So putting streetcars on that kind of corridor. But what John and I have always suggested is that we put the streetcar on Eighth Street, because basically, streetcars run better on low-volume streets, because they don't impact the traffic that's on there, and people feel much more comfortable. And the thing about streetcars that is really an education to learn, is they're really the main vehicle that augments pedestrian use. So what we envision as, as someone who works in the North Hall, Hollis area, can jump on the streetcar and come down and do business in City Hall on a lunch hour, because they wouldn't have to drive, they, they could make the time where they couldn't walk. So a lot of what's successful in Portland with the streetcar is how many people can use it to go just a little farther than they would want to walk, but it saves them from driving their car. And so that's one aspect that, that's often overlooked in that. I'd also like to hear more about the transit demand, because we often travel and come home into San Francisco late at night, and end up having to take a cab, because we can't take safe transit from BART to Emeryville. And if we knew that we could call on BART and have a vehicle waiting for us at MacArthur BART to take us home, that would be really great. So I'd like to hear some, more about that. Are we now going to answer the questions that you had directly, Diana? Is that what we want to do now? Because there's the questions of, do short-term improvements increase and make sense?
That's what we were hoping you were doing.
Okay. Well, I have, in, on all those bullet points, the first bullet points, I say yes, that the, the increment expansion of the trunk line makes sense to me. It's something that we could move forward with very quickly. And again, I go to a gym off of Gilman Street, I can't get there by public transit. I have to bike or have to drive, because from Emeryville, there's no way to get to Gilman Street. And I think that's the corridor of service that we're lacking. So I think rather than going to downtown Berkeley, the 51 does that, straight up University Avenue. So I think whatever bus system we figure out, whether it's the 48, the trunk line, it needs to go to, to North Berkeley. And I think the proposed, of course, the streetcars in Emeryville and Oakland is something I definitely agree with, that we should do it, and look to doing it sooner rather than later. And I think there are, the, many of the local and federal funding sources that we have mentioned, looked at, are definitely viable and stuff we should look at. And I also think we could look closer at rearranging our P-Bid, coming up with a paid parking source. All of Portland, at least when they first started the streetcar, their city garages funded their streetcar. So I think there are other things that we could look at. And once we get moving in this, and we really want to start seriously considering it, then we can start looking at grants, because you can't apply for a grant until you're ready for it. So until we have something that we can actually present, it's all pie in the sky. We could look at this funding source, but we can't apply for it until we're ready to do something.
So, let's see, my comments. I've a few comments. One, yeah, I just want to stress the, sorry, the economic development nature of this. I really see this as more, sort of less of a transit project and more of an economic development project. I was reading an article, actually, just last week, I think, about streetcars and their amazing ability to harness economic development. There's some really good case studies. I think the one that's the most interesting to me is the, the Southlake Union Streetcar in Seattle isn't really, it's not a very interesting transit project. It doesn't really go very far, it doesn't really get you anywhere that used to be interesting. But it's really leveraged an amazing amount of investment in that neighborhood. Amazon has located some offices there, and, and other companies are starting to do that, and, and projects are starting to be built. And so I really see this as, as a great economic development tool for Emeryville to continue with, and, and really for West Oakland as well. I'm actually, I was a little bit surprised by the desire for a streetcar on San Pablo, just because I think San Pablo right now has excellent transit service. There's a really good combination of, of services. You, you have the 72R, which really is a fast bus, and you have the 72M and the regular 72, if you need, you know, if, if you're getting off sort of between those, those rapid bus stops. So it's, it's really a well-served corridor, and I really see the, the, the streetcar as a, as a way to expand transit, and like I said, to spur economic development. The, I did want to comment on the F bus changes. Diana, I was hoping that you wouldn't mind putting that, the slide back up that showed the F route?
Let's see.
Yeah, that's the one. So I think this slide is really telling. The, the F is a great bus, and if I commuted to San Francisco, I would take it instead of BART, most likely. And it's great, the route, I think the existing route is great, because it serves a lot of people. And it's not, I think, the, the bus is not slow because of the route. It's slow because of all the stops, and it's slow because AC Transit has had so far the inability to change rider behavior to get people to exit the, the rear of the bus, which is a huge thing that would really speed up bus times dramatically. It sounds simple, but it, it really would. So, you know, when you look at this map, for example, look, I mean, look at all of those dots on Market Street. They're, they're just redundant, and they, you know, this bus could stop half that much, maybe even less, which would really dramatically speed up times. And even the spacing on 40th, I think, you know, some of those stops could be eliminated. Maybe San Pablo and Hollis is, and Bay Street is all we need. But I wouldn't want to take the F bus away from the riders that now serves on 40th Street, as well as the, the really busy transit hub of 40th and San Pablo, where there are people waiting for transit at all hours of the night and all times of the day. So, and, because I think as, as Commissioner Keller said, it's, it's the only transbay bus that we have access to on the weekends. So I think taking it away from that important transit hub is, is really something to avoid. But I do love the F, and I think it really could be sped up, and it really could be a better, a better asset for, for Emeryville residents. So I think that that concludes my comments. I do, I'll just say, I also do really love the, the idea of the circular sort of streetcar route. I, you know, when I first started thinking about this study, I was thinking at, as a, I was thinking of it as a way to go north. And so I was a little, when I first saw these changes, in the final version, I was a little bit disappointed, but then I, I started thinking about how I might actually use it, and I, I think I might actually use that circular streetcar route even more than I would use a route going north. So for what it's worth, I, I think I'm happy with the, the recommendations.
I'd like to respond to Commissioner Keller and Commissioner Moss regarding the streetcar. I mean, I guess, I view it as a big investment, and it's going to be controversial. I mean, it is wherever it happens. And so people need, I mean, it's going to require a lot of buy-in, it's going to require that people, it really matches what people, the way that people see the city working or the cities working. And I think that it also should be something that responds to what we already do. I think that, in my mind, a streetcar works where there's a route that's already established that needs to be solidified in people's minds, so that people actually move their, you know, they, there is economic development in those areas. The 72 is always crowded, San Pablo's always crowded. I don't think routing more vehicular traffic of people who are trying to get from point A to point B down San Pablo is going to benefit San Pablo and the retail and commercial spaces along San Pablo at all. But I do think putting a streetcar in along San Pablo will definitely benefit them. And I think that going from San Pablo, you know, through San Pablo, down Broadway to Jack London Square is a key, you know, it's, it's the obvious route to Oakland, downtown Oakland, Jack London Square, everything that's going on there, everything that's going on along San Pablo and Emeryville, pockets through Berkeley, and pockets through El Cerrito, et cetera. And I'm guessing that once this is, you know, once this has started, every city's going to know this is the right thing to do and buy into it. I think that trying to create economic development in areas, you know, utilizing a streetcar in areas that, you know, don't have a demand for, you know, that kind of demand right now for, for public transit, those are the places you put in buses first. Those are the places you put in cir, you know, loop routes, so that you start to establish it. And later on, once those, you know, once that demand is there, then you look at that. But, you know, at this point in time, for that amount of, you know, the amount of money, the political issues that are going to come up, and, and really needing to address those, and, and create a vision for people that they're going to buy into, I think the route down San Pablo is really the way to go.
Any other comments?
All right. Thank you. Good comments. This will be coming back to you for consideration of adoption in December, I believe. Of course, that would be for consideration of a recommendation to the City Council for adoption.